...default to maintain good audio quality for the council as well as yourselves. If you would like to speak during the meeting on a specific agenda item, please submit your request in the chat and directions to do so are in the chat. We ask that you provide your full name and your address as those are required for all speakers at in-person council meetings. If you would like to be called on during the meeting to provide public input, please insert the following into the chat and you will be called on during the relevant time for public input during that bill. Again, insert your name and your address and whether you would like to speak for or against a specific agenda item. Please be sure to unmute yourself prior to giving your remarks. In addition, for citizens that wish to speak during the privilege of the floor, please insert the following into the chat and the council president will call on you during the relevant time for public input. Again, insert your name, where you live, and please be sure to unmute yourself before speaking. Thank you.
Thank you. Disrespectful root or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech and/or actions as well as verbal attacks on any person may result in the individual without notice forfeiting the remainder of his or her allotted time. At this time, we will have the invocation by Pastor Norm Andrews of Grace Point Church. Welcome.
Thank you. Let's bow our heads. Lord, we thank you for these that have come and who gathered here together to discuss and to navigate the needs of this great city. And we ask that you would fill this room and preside over this place right now as decisions are made, and we ask that your words be our words and that your thoughts be our thoughts. Lord, we invite you to be God of this city, to be Lord of this city, and we seek your wisdom and your counsel here as decisions are made. And right now, Lord, we ask that you bless this gathering and these board members and these council members and these advisors and those that input. Lord, bless their homes, bless their families, bless their loved ones in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. May we stand with the pleasure of leading?
[inaudible]
Clark Jones, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Henry's here.
Councilmember Lee?
Present.
Councilmember Warner?
Here.
Councilmember Wax?
Present.
Vice President Niskowski?
Present.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Present.
Councilmember Hammond?
Present.
Councilmember White?
Present.
President McBride?
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you. At this time, we will have the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes from December 13, 2021.
Report of Subcommittee on Minutes to the Common Council of the City of South Bend. The Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the December 13, 2021 meeting and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept the minutes?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. There are no special business, also no reports from any city offices. Now, what, first of all, I would like to make a comment that if there's anyone present for Bill Number 132-21, it has been continued as requested by the petitioner until February 14th, 2022. Thank you. Now, I entertain a motion to resolve into the Committee of the Whole.
So moved.
There is a motion on the floor and it has been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In the opposition, motions carried.
Because this is the first meeting of the year, the city clerk shall read each bill by title only. The chairperson of the council, standing committee to which the bill was sent, shall give a report on the recommendation from the committee. A formal presentation of the bill shall be made, which is not subject to a time limitation. Common council members shall have the right to ask two preliminary questions to the presenters immediately following the close of the formal presentation on the bill. Members of the public supporting the bill shall have the opportunity to address the council. Each member of the public shall be required to state his or her name and residential address, or in the case of the proposal made on behalf of an entity other than a natural person or behalf of a group of individuals, that person or their agent shall state his name and business address for record prior to making remarks and support of the bill. Each member of the public speaking in favor of a bill shall have a limit of five minutes. If the formal presentation against the bill under consideration, the person or agent speaking on behalf of such a remonstrance group shall not be subject to time limitation. Therefore, each member of the public speaking in opposition shall be limited to five minutes for his or her presentation. Each member of the public shall be required to state his or her name and residential address, or in the case of a proposal made behalf of the entity other than the natural person, on behalf of a group of individuals, that person or their agent shall state his name or her name and the business address for record prior to making remarks in opposition of the bill. Each member of the public speaking in opposition of a bill shall be limited to five minutes. The remonstrates period following any formal presentation against the bill under consideration shall not exceed the time used by members of the public who spoke in favor of the bill or shall be limited to 30 minutes, whichever is greater. There should be an automatic five-minute rebuttal period for the persons or persons who made the formal presentation on the bill under consideration, after which the public portion of the hearing is closed. Following the public portion, then council portion then takes place where members of the council debate, ask questions, make motions on the bill under consideration. Each bill must have a motion addressing the disposition of the bill as it is then sent to the full council for final action. In compliance with the Governor's Executive Order, the South Bend Common Council will legally held by way of virtual meeting using Microsoft Teams. The Committee of the Whole notes how residents can participate for the public portion as The public can participate in the meeting by following the directions of the chat section in the Microsoft Teams app at the link provided by the city clerk. Any member of the public wishing to speak in favor or opposition of the bill must indicate their desire prior to the close of the public hearing, and in order to speak in favor or against a bill, you will need to state your name, address, and also required to speak at in-person, also at in-person meetings. The city clerk will inform the chair of the Committee of the Whole in which order to proceed to address each person in order with a time limit of five minutes. All right. The Committee of the Whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading and public hearing. I wish to share with you that bills that will be given a second reading and public hearing have been given a first reading and set for a committee meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation of the proposed ordinance will be immediately followed with the committee report. The formal presentation shall be on time. Bill 142-21, Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill 142-21 a second reading?
Yes. 142-21, Public Hearing on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Approving a Petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 1165 South Franklin Street.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, Chair. This afternoon, Bill 142-21 came before the zoning and annexation committee and comes to the Committee of the Whole with a favorable recommendation.
Is there a petitioner present? I ask that you state your name, address, and share with us key points regarding the bill that is before us.
Good evening, Council. Joseph Molnar is owning specialist offices on the 14th floor of the county city building. Before you today is a special exception, a request located at 1165 Franklin Street in Ignition Park. Just a little bit of background, of course, this was the land where the old Sudabaker manufacturing was, campus had existed. When those buildings were torn down about 20 years ago, Ignition Park began on the site. That was started under a Planned Unit Development, or PUD, which is a zoning classification that allowed for specific items to be approved or not approved. When the city went to a new zoning ordinance in 2020, we did away with PUDs and just assigned them all traditional districts, which now that this land is zoned I industrial. What the petitioner is looking to do is expand the tank area for the turbo machinery lab that's located on the site, and the petitioner can explain more about that if you have any questions. But because they're expanding the current scope of where the heavy industrial use is taking place and they're expanding it into this area here, it needs the special exception because anytime you expand heavy industrial use in the city of South Bend, it has to go through this special exception process to make sure that everything clears out okay. The proposed use of heavy industrial is consistent with the character of the district in which it is located. The site has been in operation for several years and we haven't had any major issues or concerns. The site is currently being used for these purposes and is well-established in the neighborhood. The middle, minimal expansion of the footprint of the site to allow for the additional fuel and gas tanks should not adversely affect the use of any adjacent areas. This went to the Board of Zoning Appeals with a favorable recommendation from staff, and then the board sends it to you as well with a favorable recommendation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Council members, do you have any questions? Mr. Warner?
I want to make sure I, so the variances we're looking at are just to have a taller fence, a six-foot fence to a 10-foot fence.
So council doesn't deal with the variances. So they did need some variances, which were handled at the Board of Zoning Appeals. Those were approved. I didn't mean to include that in the letter like you guys request. So they did have to do, those were approved. This is the special exception to allow for the use.
Special exception, okay. Use exception, thank you.
My PowerPoint is freaking out on me, or I would move to the next slide, which shows the fence.
No further questions, thank you.
Any other questions from any council members? At this point, we will go to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
You're all right. Okay.
Yep. Mr. Producer, this is my first day, and you're doing great.
Tim Sexton with offices of 405 Main Building at the University of Notre Dame. I'm here this evening on behalf of the university and as well the property owner. We work closely with the team at Community Investment to put forth the plan that you see today, working with Angela, Tim Kokren, and others, Angela Smith, I should have said. I do have with me tonight Josh Cameron, who's the Director of Notre Dame Turbo Lab. So if there are any questions specifically of the layout here and some of the work that we're going to be doing, new work that we'll be doing on that site, we're happy to answer those questions. Yes, Councilman Davis?
He hasn't recognized me. Councilman Davis? Thank you. The irony of this situation, I think it's a great story, right? It's on the same site where heavy manufacturing was really something for us here in South Bend, and so we're back at heavy manufacturing in the same site doing something that is a higher grade of manufacturing on its own, right? I think it's a great story. I really do. I think it's a beautiful story. The question that follows that is, do we foresee manufacturing at a, as some type of comparable rate to what we saw then here in South Bend with something like this? I mean, because you're creating parts, right? You're creating the engine, right? And so those things are used. Would South Bend ever see a manufacturing plant here because of that?
Yeah, our great hope is, is that as we continue to do the research that we're doing, that companies are going to want to come and locate here because of the quality of the research that we're doing.
Right.
And so I do. I hope that that long-term becomes the case. Just Josh and I, Dr. Cameron, we were talking earlier this evening. There's other things that are in the works right now that hopefully will come to fruition that would continue to enhance the work that we're doing down there. I wish I had a crystal ball to say, but I do think there's great possibilities.
Well, sure. So, because we went to Albany.
Yes.
Right. Correct. So we went to Albany, right? And so we had this idea of what this is going to look like.
Yeah.
We first started out there on the campus of Notre Dame with the first part.
The mind, yeah. Midwest Institute for Nano Technology Discovery.
Right. And so as it's grown, right, because it's growing.
Yes.
Yeah. It's just, I guess it was more of a natural question.
Yeah. No, that's a fair question.
Getting excited because you actually get to see it, you know, from the beginning up to the current day, so.
Yeah. This, what we're doing here today is just an enhancement of what we've been doing and taking it to another level.
Good job.
So fingers crossed.
Good job.
Thank you.
Councilman?
Thank you, Chair Lee. Thank you, Mr. Sexton. Since you both came out of the cold to present to us this, this after, this evening, would you mind giving a synopsis of the research that is happening on site?
I'm going to turn it over because I remember your comment earlier tonight. I'm not the person that should talk about that. Dr. Cameron?
The, these special exceptions actually represent the needs.
Your name and address, sir. Your name and address.
Yeah. Dr. Joshua Cameron. I'm 50558 Hollybrook Drive, Ranger, Indiana, 46530. So this new equipment represents expansion into two new markets for the turbo machinery laboratory. Historically, we focused on what we call aerogas turbine engines, and now we are moving into hypersonics, which is an exciting new area in aerospace. And the second area is related to the energy sector. So we're going to be studying supercritical carbon dioxide cycles, which have promised to produce energy more efficiently than steam cycles. So these are two very new areas in which we're broadening our impact on the, on the industry.
Thank you. Thanks so much. No further questions.
Any other questions? Now, we'll go to the, the public hearing portion. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 142-21?
I don't see anyone in the virtual audience that is expressing interest to speak in favor of Bill 142-21.
Is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition of Bill 142-21?
There is no one present wishing to speak in opposition of Bill 142-21.
All right. Council members?
Get to the close.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Sheila. If, if, if there's no other questions, no one in opposition or for it, we will now close the public portion of this hearing. Is, are there any statements from the council members that want to be made?
Just the, the statement I would like to make, thank you, Chair, is that this is a wonderful opportunity right here in our community to be pursuing this research, and I'm glad to hear the synopsis of what it is that you're doing, and it's very exciting work. Thank you for coming this evening and giving your presentation.
Anyone else? Mr. Warner?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
The motion has been, um...
Excuse me, Chair. Should be a motion to send to the full council with favorable recommendation.
I make a motion to send the bill to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
The motion has, has been, there's been a motion, and it's been second. Clerk Jones, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Motion is passed. I will entertain a motion to rise from the Committee of the Whole and report back to the full council.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and second. Clerk Jones, please take the roll. Oh, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
The whole council is now back in session. This is the portion of our meeting, is where bills are given a third reading and actions taken regarding deals that were heard during the Committee of the Whole. Clerk Jones, will you give Bill 142-21 a third reading?
Yes. 142-21, Third Reading on an Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Approving a Petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 1165 South Franklin Street.
Thank you. Councilman Lee, is there a recommendation from the Committee of the Whole?
It was sent with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. I would now entertain a motion regarding Bill 142-21.
Move, Professor.
Second.
Then move this second. Clerk Jones, uh, affirmation. Clerk Jones, will you take the roll, please?
Yes. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Wax?
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McBride?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Resolution going to this portion of the council meeting where the common council hears deals filed as proposed resolutions. Title of each proposed resolution is read by the city clerk, report from the committee chairperson, standing committee to which the bill is referred to for an advisory review, and recommendation is then given. Resolution dash one comes out of Health and Public Safety Committee. As the presenter here, Chief Ruskowski. I believe he should be online.
Yes, ma'am, I am online. Um, I'm, 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 I'm having difficulties. Hopefully you, you all can hear me. Scott Ruskowski, 701 West Sample.
I want to, Chief, give me a second. I wanted to make sure. We've heard that there was errors that people could not get online. That's why the pastor came in today, so I wanted to make sure I heard him because I also got to finish reading my stage. So thank you so much. During the public portion, on each proposed resolution, members of the public are invited to address the council. We ask that you please give your name, address, and comments on the bill. If you have any questions, they will be addressed by the presenter during their rebuttal. Each member of the public is limited to five minutes. With those speaking in favor going first, followed by those in opposition, then a five-minute rebuttal for the presenter of the bill. At this time, is there a committee report?
Yes. Bill 2201.
Clerk Jones, can you give Resolution 0122 a reading first?
Yes. 2201, A Resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, Approving an Interlocal Agreement between the City of South Bend, Indiana, the City of Mishawaka, Indiana, and St. Joseph County, Indiana, for the mutual operation of the Special Victims Units, Addressing Crimes of Special Gravity in St. Joseph County.
Thank you so much. Is there a committee report?
Yes. Bill 2201 was heard in Health and Public Safety today, and it was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm still writing. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion, oh, no, presenter, presenter. I forgot about the chief that fast.
President McBride, if I may be recognized?
Yes, you can be recognized.
Thank you. So in my day job, I took part in discussions and creation of this document and represented a party to the agreement, St. Joseph County Police Department, and therefore will be recusing myself from the vote and abstaining from the vote.
Thank you so much for sharing, and thank you for the work that you put in with this agreement. We appreciate that. Chief Ruskowski, could you please state your name and address and then begin with your presentation?
Yes, ma'am. Scott Ruskowski, Chief of Police, South Bend Police Department, 701 West Sample Street. Not so much of a presentation. I've, I've explained in the committee meeting, I was hoping under Health and Public Safety Chairman Wax that he would do the, the presentation component. However, with that being said, I know it's 19 pages. I apologize, but this is what happens when attorneys get involved. We have 19-page MOUs. On that note, they did a phenomenal job. It was Kylie Connell from the City of South Bend, Troy Warner, as you just heard from the county, and the Mishawaka attorney, and then the prosecutor's office, including the prosecutor himself, were all, had significant input in drafting and coming up to the MOU that we currently have right now. I will tell you, the long story short is, with the dissolving of the Metro Homicide Unit and the Family Violence Unit, we at the police department gained a net total of seven sworn officers. With that being said, there's really not been that much interruption per se when it comes to our input with the Family Violence Unit. We will still have two officers that are sworn that will be stationed there at all times, and then we will be funding three positions, as we previously did, of non-sworn police officers. The officers that came back in-house, the bulk of them are still being used to investigate and bring resolution to our survivors and domestic violence cases. Any sexual assault, anything against children whatsoever, all is still handled through our Family Violence Unit, just like it is with the other agencies, through the Family Justice Center. And it's not just the attorneys that were involved, or the chiefs, or the sheriffs, but probably most importantly, the representatives from the Family Justice Center, Carolyn, and we had YWCA, Child Protective Services, all of them had input. We had several meetings with them. They were able to air their grievances, and more importantly afterward, were able to give input of how we can really fine to the, find, fine tune this. And especially, again, this is not just the South Bend Police Department. Every agency is experiencing some type of shortfall when it comes to having officers, and this is a national thing as well, and we are not exempt from it. So unfortunately, in the, in the, we had to take drastic measures, and part of the measures was dissolving the Metro Homicide Unit and the Family Violence Unit as it, as it was, but actually revamped and revisited and refreshed, quite frankly, the Family Violence Unit to, to meet, hopefully, everyone's needs. And we've been doing well so far since we took over on October 15th of, of last year.
Thank you so much. Do you have anything to add, Councilman Wax?
No, just to, I guess, give a little bit of background on the roll. This is an agreement that was prepared between the three parties, Mishawaka, St. Joseph County, and South Bend. What the council is addressing today is a resolution which would give authority for the city to enter into the agreement, and that's what we're here for to discuss.
Thank you so much. With that, I would turn to council, asking if there are any questions at this time.
I would just repeat my question to the chief that I asked this earlier today. Just so that we all understand, the agreement would call for South Bend Police Department to provide two uniformed officers and then to provide funding for an additional three officers. So South Bend's contribution to SVU will be the equivalent of five officers. Is that correct?
That is correct. It'd be two sworn police officers and three funded positions that would not be sworn South Bend, City of South Bend, police officers. However, they are typically and would be deputized either through the sheriff or through the prosecutor. That's, that's how it has worked for several years now, and I, that is, that is going to continue that way as well. Mrs. President, I, I actually was remiss because I think Kylie is on the line because she may have input as well. If need be, she's the attorney for... If, if need be, she's the attorney for the South Bend Police Department through the city of South Bend.
Thank you for that. Kylie, if you're there and would like to speak, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Kylie Connell, um, five three one six seven Meadowgrass Lane. And I don't have much more to input, just that we're excited for, um, the interagencies to continue working together. We're hopeful for the resolution and for the impact on the community.
Thank you so much. At this time, I would turn to the public portion. Clark Jones, you see anybody in the public portion wishing to speak in favor of Bill twenty-two dash zero one?
There is no one, um, from the public that is expressing interest to speak in favor of Bill twenty-two oh one.
That's virtually. Yes.
Uh, Troy Warner, uh, offices, uh, inside the St. Joseph County Jail, four oh one West Sample Street. Um, this, uh, this, the structure and agreement isn't anything new. The Family Violence, uh, Unit has been in place since nineteen ninety-seven. This is just kind of a refresh and a reshaping and, uh, a, 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 a little bit of a shrinking of it due to, uh, staff shortages. Uh, on behalf of the sheriff, uh, I thank, uh, the mayor and chief and Kylie and prosecutor Cotter for, uh, coming together many months ago. These discussions started kind of in early summer, uh, to find a way to be able to get these victims of these most serious crimes, uh, to be investigated in the special victims unit where the service agencies are onsite and can provide the support that they need. Uh, Chief mentioned the, the, the Family Justice Center, the YWCA, and the KC Center are all integrally involved in, in the process and the operations of Special Victims Unit. And, uh, we're very fortunate as a community to be able to have that to continue.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone, uh, wishing to speak in opposition of this bill?
There is no one from the virtual po- public that's wishing to speak in opposition of this bill.
Thank you. At this time, the public portion is closed. I would turn back to council. Any additional comments? Uh, Councilman Lee?
I would just like to say that it's, it's, um, with, with all of the issues that we have to deal with in the community, seeing our, um, Mishawaka, South Bend, and St. Joe County Police Departments working together uh, to handle the special victim, you, this spec- special victims unit is, 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 it, it's a step in a very good direction and, uh, we're looking to see that people are receiving the services that they need and, and with the social services around. It's a good thing for our community. So thank you to everyone involved, worked hard to make this happen, um, because our, our residents are our highest priority, and being able to service them in the, in the, the best way possible is what's needed in this time. So thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you. Councilman Wax?
Uh, I, I think, uh, Councilman Lee said what I wanted to say just a whole lot better than I would've said it. Uh, I just wanna thank everybody involved. It's such an important issue and to have, um, the, the various departments work together towards a common goal where they could best, um, provide and, and help and these individuals and families that need this help so much and to, to work on this together. It's really heartening and I'm really happy that we got here and I'm, um, be happy to support it.
Thank you. Councilman Davis?
Yes ma'am, thank you. Um, great job Troy, uh, and all to all the others that worked on this job. Uh, Eli from the meeting this morning this afternoon. Um, I do have a question, but I don't think the one needs to answer. This is almost rhetorical, uh, just something that just came up. Uh, given what has happened to our police departments and getting into what the partnership that Canada was speaking of, and this was, uh, Troy, I, 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 it begs the question about a, um, a, uh, metro police department, and that is a part of the discussion. We're short on officers. Uh, everybody needs to help and support. Obviously, we're kicking in here, smaller department, right? But the idea of a metro police department really starts to make a lot of sense right now unless we're talking about cross-training people. Just an idea, just an idea, just a thought, but it did come up because I heard what Troy was talking about. Great idea, great partnership, great partnership, so.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? At this time, I would like to entertain a motion regarding Bill twenty-two dash zero one.
Action of resolution two dash zero one.
A second.
Thank you. Clark Jones, call the roll.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
I'm staying.
Councilmember Wax.
Aye.
Vice President Niskowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes on exemption.
Thank you. The bill has been adopted. Deals on first reading? Clark Jones, could you give Bill twenty-two dash zero one a first reading?
Twenty, Bill twenty-two zero one. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating two million five hundred thousand dollars from South Bend's American Rescue Plan Fund Number two sixty-three for premium pay for eligible employees performing essential work pursuant to federal guidelines under the American Rescue Plan Act.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill twenty-two dash zero one to Personnel and Finance and Public Hearing in third reading on January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. This time, we will turn to unfinished business. Uh, the standing committees, if you did not get a copy and wanted a hard copy, we have, uh, the lists over on the kiosk, on the desk. And again, I would say that, um, it's one of the most challenging things, I believe, with the, uh, eleven standing committees that we have, is assigning people to committees that they a- asked for. Uh, there were people who did and some people who did not. So, uh, try to get a good balance for people to have a good team, for us to work together and to, uh, make sure that we're moving, uh, the business further. So I, I am, thank you all for the input and the roles that you are undertaking, and I look forward to that. I would also like to encourage everyone, again, we will be looking at different means. I know Clark Jones, uh, said that she could put out for citizens, uh, information also in the water bill.
Right.
As well, and there have been other opportunities and people came with ideas. So we'll be trying to do a, a blast out for mailers to get, uh, citizens more involved, um, with that process. Secondly, the mayor's office is planning a second round of the quarterly events for the Meet the Mayor and Team of South Bend. The date is February the eighth, from six to eight, at O'Brien Center, and the council will have a table, um, that evening. So just wanted to give an update. And also, the clerk's office sent us all a conflict of interest statement that we have to sign every year routinely. So if you can sign that and send it back to the clerk's office, they would appreciate that. Is there any other unfinished business by anyone in the council?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Sheila had her hand up. Ladies first.
Thank you, Councilmember Todd Davis. I just wanted to make, uh, for the public record that I have filed my conflict of interest statement with the clerk's office this afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you Chair. President.
Councilman Davis?
Yes, thank you. Um, we talked about the media thing earlier, and I just wanted to make sure that we were still there and making sure, when we hear back about the thing with WNDU or SAS station.
I'll reach out to Tricia Slomah this evening, so I'm sure tomorrow sometime we will hear.
Okay, great. Uh, and the second thing is that, um, and, and I don't know the steps for this, but I'm gonna like ask because I think that this is a real thing. The water bills and the water shut-off pandemic, when do we start having a discussion about the delinquency of these water bills? How many people are behind? If we do restart our enforcement of it, how many people will be shut off? Or maybe this is indefinite? I don't know, but I know it's been well over a year. Uh, and so you're talking about the, the level of collections. Uh, utilities is my committee. I will be bringing this forth, but I'm putting it out there on the table. If somebody has better information than I have right now, you know, you feel free to speak. But I think that that's a real issue and it's coming up, well, it has come up, so. I don't know, I, I don't know if it's anyone's appetite on it is, but water shut-offs is a really big thing.
I think those are good topics, and I think, um, if I'm not speaking out of line, being that you are, uh, the chair of the Utilities Committee.
Yes.
I definitely feel it would follow under your purview and any support that you, uh, would like. Uh, let's get it. But I think it's, uh, prevalent now, and if you would like an update or for it to come before council, I think, uh, that would be great for you to reach out to have them make either an update to us or to you or however you would like to lead that.
Sure, and if there's any other council member that thinks that, you know, this is a, a, a necessary conversation, I'd be interested in hearing from you. Um, email me, call me, it doesn't matter, just communicate. And, and you know, we can all put it together. I think that that impacts everybody, every single one of us.
Absolutely, thank you. Ms. Hammond?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to point out that the county is winding down their ERP program to assist people that need, um, help with, um, delinquent rent payment and those types of things. There's about another week or so before they move that to the, downstate. So if you have anyone in your districts or if anyone knows of anyone that still needs to file an application, this would be the time to do that.
Is there a link or any information that you could share?
If you contact the auditor's office.
Thank you.
Send out a link.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Is there any new business? Well, that was, I guess unfinished and new business. Um, I will move at this time to the privilege of the floor. Again, disrespectful root or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. Any speech or actions or verbal attacks on any person may result in individual without notice forfeiting the remainder of his or her allotted time. Individuals who wish to address the council must state their name and residential address. Individuals will be limited to three minutes only. The maximum time limit for this portion of the meeting shall be thirty minutes. Individuals should not be permitted to address topics which the council has heard previously on tonight's agenda. The council president may assign a topic raised by an individual during the privileges of the floor to the appropriate council member and/or request the city clerk to contact a member of the administration for review, and topics should, assigned shall be responded to at the next scheduled council meeting. Clark Jones, are there's anyone wishing to speak in the privilege of the floor?
There is no one in the virtual audience that is expressing interest to speak in privilege of the floor.
Thank you. With that said, this meeting is adjourned.
John?
Thank you.